Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Campbell.
Yeah.
Dempsey.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Krab.
Here.
Mensah.
Here.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. This evening, we have a presentation from the 41B District Court with their annual fund distribution. And with us tonight, we have the newly appointed Judge Jacob Feminino with us.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jacob Feminino Jr. My address is 136 South Wilson Boulevard. And I'm proud to say that because I'm the first judge. I was appointed by Judge Governor Whitmer. And I'm the first judge from Mount Clemens to serve on the Court 41B since George III the Third has been on the bench. So it's been quite a while, and I'm proud of my Mount Clemens roots, very much so. And when I did the application, I emphasized the fact that I've been living here in Mount Clemens since 2005. I consider it my home, and I'm proud to be serving the community. And I've been on the bench for six years, or six months, six weeks.
Six weeks.
Yeah, six weeks. So I'm enjoying the job very much. Chief Judge Fuqua asked if I would appear here before the City Commission. And I'm also here on behalf of District Court Judge Sebastian Lucido. We recently just had our report done in our meeting in regard to the budget for the 41B District Court. I'm happy to say we're in a fantastic financial position. We're giving money back to the communities again. We're accepting no money back from Mount Clemens, Clinton Township, or Harrison Township. I'm here today with a check to give to the city of Mount Clemens. We wish it could be more, but it's still a check back, and we're not receiving anything from the community. So with that being the case, it's a good financial condition of the court. We're paying down the bond to pay for the new court building. And to bring up the court building, as an attorney, I was able to go there quite often. But it's a beautiful building, and the people that work there are fantastic. And I encourage the citizens of Mount Clemens to go to the court, not just for bad times, you get a speeding ticket or something else in that nature, but there's some great resources at the court, some great people, and I encourage everybody to go there. If they have a question about anything, we have some great courts there, specialized courts, drug court, sobriety court, veterans' court. We created a beautiful veterans' memorial at the 41B District Court recently. So some good things are going on with the court itself, and I'm happy to be a part of it. I really am, and I'm proud to be on the court. I hope people agree. I'm going to get to run for reelection next year already.
(laughing).
Okay, so fun times ahead. I've also seen at the court that there's not a great deal of history that's included in the court. And I'm going to be reaching out to the mayor and either to the Historical Society of Mount Clemens, or whoever I need to, to see if I can bring some of that history of Mount Clemens to the Clinton Township Court. And I think that would be a great thing. Never forget the roots that this court was here. Many a times, I remember going before Judge Scandorito and Judge Foster in this court, Judge Davis then for a little while. I have replaced Judge Davis, and she did a fantastic job. I have big shoes to fill. But when she got that new court created, she stood strong with the fact that she wanted to make sure that that court was going to be self-sufficient. And it is, and it's doing very well. So I want to present this court, I have this check to the mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we're here at all times. If anybody ever has any questions, you can reach out to the court. We have a great staff. I've been, I'm very lucky. And just a side note, I just wanted to tell you that I teach politics at a Combe Community College. Been doing that for a little while. When we are talking about participation in the Constitution and participation in politics, I show my class many of the videos from your board meeting.
Oh, gee.
You know Gloria very well. I've even mentioned you on some essay questions. So keep doing the good work here. We appreciate you. I've come to this chambers as an attorney, as a member of the Planning Commission. I've come here as a citizen, and I've come here as a charter commissioner elected in this district. So I'm proud of Mount Clemens, and we hope to, and I hope to do, continue to do a good job for the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I did want to mention, although the judge did mention it, he served on the Planning Commission for many years, and we really appreciate the time that you spent here with us. And I don't know, Laura, were you on the Planning Commission when?
Yeah.
Okay. So, good luck. Thank you. Thank you for the money. Greatly appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Are there any other presentations, meetings, or anything? No? Okay. Adoption of the agenda with the amendment that has been added. Nine E.
Move to adopt the agenda as amended.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Okay, public participation. This is time you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name and address, and that you adhere to our three-minute rule. Mic is open.
Good evening. My name is Bill Ringler. I'm a retired employee of Mount Clemens here for many, many years. And my address is 1040 Roseland Street, Mount Clemens, Michigan. Last fall, pardon? Yes. Last fall, the hospital started first construction of Harrington. And as it turned out, and I understand, the unions went on strike, so they couldn't get into there in time to do any of the paving or anything at that time. So they deferred it until this year. Well, now, we're in the middle of, you know, June already, and they weren't there today. Nobody was there today. Nobody was there all last week. Nobody was there at least a half a week the following week. They're not working on it. And it's just sitting there, and we got all of the traffic going by our house on Harrington there. Unbelievable. Day and night. And it's not very quiet either. And I'm just saying, why is it that they're taking so long, and they haven't worked on it in two and a half weeks? What's wrong? I mean, somebody from the city here should be on top of that thing, as far as I'm concerned. I used to work at the city for 27 years, and I think somebody should be on top of it and say, hey, you know, let's get this job done. It's been sitting there. And it's one lane, going one way only, and it's been that way for a long time, and nothing's being done. And I'm saying, I'm sorry, but our neighbors, nobody likes it. Everybody's upset about it. So that's my...
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Listening, thank you.
Anyone else?
Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. I'd like to commend the city and the boards and the commissions and whoever made the decision not to put medical marijuana and/or recreational marijuana facilities in and near our neighborhoods. And I appreciate that so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else?
Gloria Haller, 260 Cass. Have a couple topics, maybe would address Mr. Ringler's question. We're lacking administrative ability at the city and haven't for a while. For the reasons I've brought to each of you and given you any documentation, I think that Ms. Borges and Mr. Wood ought to be removed. Three years. What's the matter? Six months I can see as an interim. Three years? What's with that? Who's sleeping? Now, as I believe in constructive criticism, how about Mr. Maison? I've spoken with him. Smart man. He could be in interim for a while, maybe six months. Linda Kounath, I don't know if you could get her back. She might not want to come back. But you know, there's a question there. She had a master's in public administration, and you ask her, let her go instead of, she's been a wonderful city manager. She's qualified, educated. Instead of that, you're putting people that are neither educated nor experienced nor qualified. I guess they jump all on strengths. I don't know. I think it's a terrible waste of talent, time, and everything else. And I notice under the current administration, the finance department's been cleared out. They got rid of Linda Kounath. I guess she knew too much, and knew where the bones were. Same thing with Laura Willey, whatever that problem was. But the very fact you're cleaning out that department, and I have a lot of documents from it, I can see why they're going to do that. And I think, I don't know what's going on at the executive session, but I hope you're going to address this issue. You need to get moving on getting qualified. Don't tell me you don't have the money for it either. Let me tell you the cost of this. I'll repeat it. You got to pay for two people plus, that's times two. You're paying both of their assistance additional. They both get a car allowance. I think it's three grand. They both get a phone. It's increased the legal bills because they don't know what they're doing. And whatever you budgeted for a city manager, you add that to it, you're going to afford yourself a pretty good city manager. Bet you Cliff and State for that. Probably not that dumb, but he might.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving along here. I need a, there's no administrative responses, so I need a motion to approve the minutes previous meetings.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented from the meeting of June 3rd.
And workshop.
And the workshop. Second.
Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Okay, general business, nine A. Introduction and first reading of the City of Mount Clemens abandoned slash vacant non-residential structure ordinance number 18.520. Need a motion?
Move to approve the introduction and first reading of the Mount Clemens abandoned slash vacant non-residential structure ordinance number 18.520, and set the second reading and adoption for July 1st, 2019.
Support.
Upon direction from City Commission, the City of Mount Clemens abandoned vacant non-residential structure ordinance has been prepared by city administration. The ordinance would authorize the regulation of abandoned vacant non-residential structures within the city, including the registration of such structures establishing standards of care, as well as the procedures for establishing reoccupancy, the setting of fees, and the provision of penalties for violations of the chapter.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Mensah.
I just wanted to know, how will we be notifying, you know, the public business owners of this change?
I think they're looking at you, Brian.
There are currently no plans in place, but it's definitely something we can consider.
Yeah, I just think it would be nice to notify them.
Yeah, and they are going to have, you know, when the ordinance becomes effective, the fees that would still need to be adopted by this commission via resolution wouldn't kick in for another year. So there's going to be some time for us to do that.
Okay. Anyone else? C, non-roll call, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, nine B. Request approval to enter into an agreement for electrical inspector services for 2020 fiscal year. Motion?
Approve the agreement for electrical... You got it? Or we can do it together. All right, approve the agreement for the electrical inspection service between the City of Mount Clemens and Fusion Electric Incorporated, and to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the same.
Support.
That's his first time.
Fusion Electric Incorporated will provide electrical inspection services and shall receive an annual fee of $37,000 and be paid biweekly for said services. With City Commission approval, the one-year contract shall become effective July 1st, 2019, and expire on June 30th, 2020. The contract has been reviewed by the city attorney and the contractor.
Questions? Commissioner Mensah.
So I took a look at the statistics. In the first quarter of 2018, we had 49, just the first quarter, we had 49 electrical inspections. In the first quarter of 2019, we had 75 electrical inspections. I don't think that paying a lump sum is fair. As you can see, there's a vast difference there. 26, you know, 26 inspections in just one quarter. When you look at the overall monthly average for 17, which, 2017, which is 45.22, and then that monthly average for 18, which was 35.75, that's 10 less per month. I would like to see these contracts be on a per hour or per job basis, and I would also like to see a night and weekend.
Commissioner Bunton.
If this contract was negotiated and the electrical people agreed to it, I don't see what our question would be. I mean, this is an agreement that has been agreed to by both parties. They are satisfied. I don't know what we would do as a city commission to override that and tell them, well, we've got to do something else. We have to do this, and this, and this. You know, it was agreed to by the parties involved, and so I find that if there's a disagreement, then they can work that out, and then we can, you know, vote on it at that point. So anyway, that's my thought.
Anyone else?
Just so we make sure we understand, it's $37,000 for the year, and they do all electrical inspections that we have, right? So it's the game, right? You can, and $37,000 is a pretty low amount. So if they do more inspections, we don't pay more, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Do they do less?
That's correct. And I would say that the number of inspections is not necessarily a complete picture of the time spent, because there are some complex inspections that will take, you know, a half or, you know, an hour. Others, they're in and out in 15 minutes. So it's not a complete picture in terms of time spent, looking just at the number of inspections.
Is this the same amount as last year?
Yes. None of the inspection contracts were included in increases.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
No.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Nine C. Request approval to enter into agreement with the plumbing inspector for services for 2020 fiscal year. Need a motion?
Approve the agreement for plumbing inspection service between the City of Mount Clemens and Joseph A. Orr, and to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the same.
Support.
Joseph A. Orr will provide plumbing inspection services and shall receive an annual fee of $37,000 and be paid biweekly for said services. With City Commission approval, the one-year contract shall become effective July 1st, 2019, and expire on June 30th, 2020. The contract has been reviewed by the city attorney and the contractor.
Questions? Commissioner Mensah.
Same commentary.
Okay.
By the hour, by the job, and a night and a weekend.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
No.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Nine D. Approve purchases and invoices.
Oh, we have the...
What did I say?
D.
D.
You're forgetting the new item.
Oh, the one, oop, I'm looking at the old. All right. Nine C.
We just did say...
Did C. Yeah, that's what I was going. I was right. What's everybody jumping on me for?
E comes after D.
E comes after D. I was on D. Okay. Payment and purchases of invoices, please.
Move to approve payment of purchases and invoices as presented.
Support.
Any questions, comments? Commissioner Mensah.
I just wondered what the additional change order was for 36K.
There was some additional work that was done with the foundation for the sand filters at the wastewater treatment plant. It's the grids that they set in. After they removed the old ones, there was some additional that were damaged and had to be repaired and replaced.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Okay, nine E. Request approval to enter into an agreement with Waste Management for sludge removal at the wastewater treatment plant. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the agreement between the City of Mount Clemens and Waste Management Dolphin Services for removal of sludge at the Mount Clemens wastewater treatment plant subject to final approval of the city attorney.
Support.
The city currently contracts with Biotech for sludge removal at the wastewater treatment plant. Due to the unseasonably wet weather this spring, the sludge removal process has been unable to be completed by Biotech. As a temporary measure, the city has inquired about alternative processes and has found a reasonable solution to help alleviate the already 100% full sludge tanks. The attached agreement provides the costs and scope of services that would be provided by Waste Management Dolphin Services. If the city does not eliminate some portion of this sludge and spills untreated waste into the Clinton River, the wastewater treatment plant will be in violation of the MPDES permit and the administrative consent order issued by the MDEQ. Should that occur, fines and penalties could become costly to the city. The agreement is currently being reviewed by the city attorney's office.
Commissioner Mensah.
I would just like to say thank you to the utility supervisor, Mr. Pick, for bringing this to our attention, to administration's attention, and taking care of this matter for us.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Bunton.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda. Need a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Okay, the managers report.
The annual fireworks display will take place on the west side of the riverbank on Friday, June 28, 2019, at dusk. Prior to the fireworks, there will be a concert sponsored by Oakland University Macomb featuring the band Nightline. The annual garden walk and breakfast will be held on Saturday, June 29, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. at the Crocker House Museum. For information and tickets, please contact 586-465-2488. City offices will be closed on Thursday, July 4, 2019, for the Independence Day holiday. There will be no refuse pickup on Thursday, July 4. Pickup will run one day behind schedule beginning Friday, July 5. Refuse pickup for Monday, July 1, Tuesday, July 2, and Wednesday, July 3, will be picked up on schedule. And the Harrington Street rehabilitation project has recently been halted due to wet weather that we have been receiving this spring. There is an area where the ground is so saturated due to the rain that the pavement placed there have failed and has to be redone. That work is scheduled to be complete by tomorrow, with the final asphalt layer being placed over the entire roadway early next week. We are sympathetic to the residents and the users of Harrington, and ask for your continued patience as this project nears to completion. It is scheduled to be completed by Friday, June 28, and is tentatively on schedule to be that way.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Mensah.
I would like to congratulate Judge Feminino on his appointment to the bench, and I would like to say thank you. Just thank you for saying positive, wonderful things about Mount Clemens. Over the last week, there have been a lot of very negative comments, you know, on the Mount Clemens Facebook pages, very full of gossip, rumor, and innuendo, stuff that is absolutely not true. So I would like to tell the audience and the residents, if you have a question about something going on in the city, contact administration. Contact any one of us commissioners. Contact two or three of us commissioners. We'll be happy to answer your questions. Do not just believe that the rumor, gossip, and innuendo that we are seeing on Facebook, on Mount Clemens Community Bulletin Board, on You Know You're From Mount Clemens If, on Clemenites for Life. Just simply come and ask us. Ask, you know, the mayor, ask the commissioners, ask the city, you know, management staff. And I lost my other note. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford.
I'd like to remind the people that Thursday, the Friends of Shadyside will have their meeting at 6:00 at the library.
Thursday at 6:00. Thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
Hope to see everyone at the fireworks and enjoy, hopefully, summer. It will start soon, and we can get a real summer going, but enjoy your time now that the kids are out of school. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bunton.
Okay. June 19th, some crazy things to celebrate, or some good things to celebrate during the month of June. June 19th is Juneteenth Day, celebrates and symbolizes the end of slavery in the United States. President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on September 22, 1862, but it was not in place or completed until June 19, 1865, and then all of the slaves were then free. Some people held on, or some states held on until 1865, as opposed to doing what they were told to do in 1862. June 21st, summer solstice. It is the longest day of the year.
to doing what they were told to do in 1862. June 21st, summer solstice. It is the longest day of the year. It is the meteorological start of summer. The amount of daylight diminishes from, for the next six months from this day. So get out and enjoy it. June 26th, forgiveness day. It is a time to forgive and to be forgiven. The world would be a better place if everyone honored this day. Find someone that you have odds with and seek peace. Forgive and ask for forgiveness. That could go a long ways in our political world. Anyway, words of wisdom, Commissioner wisdom. An apology is a good way to have the last word. Also, tact is a good way of making a point without making an enemy. Things to think about. And with that, we'll say good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Bunton.
A few months back, I participated with the mayor and Mr. Tingley in a forum from the Art Center called Community Innovations Forum. And in that forum, we broke off into small groups, and a couple of initiatives for Mount Clemens have come, come from that forum. One of them being a group called, well, sorry, an initiative called MC and Me. And the idea is, behind MC and Me is to have everyone in the community put forth a picture that reminds them of Mount Clemens. Maybe it's going to the Dairy Queen with your mom, or the racetrack at, you know, what was, what is, I guess Gibraltar at this point. Maybe it is the baths, or it's your, your front yard, it's a tree. It's anything that reminds you or is, is representative for you of Mount Clemens. And so there is a Facebook group, MC and Me, that you can search for, and you can join the Facebook group, and you can submit photos that way. Or if you don't have that capability, which is fine, you can bring a printed-out picture of, of whatever you wanted to bring. You can bring that picture to the Anton Art Center. They will scan the picture for you and they will give you your original back. They're asking for those pictures as soon as possible because they'd like to compile them and build a giant wall of pictures that are positive symbols of our community. And so at these events, we can have these pictures out. And so if you have, have a picture that you'd like to participate in, please make sure that you join the MC and Me Facebook group or bring a picture into the Art Center. Another initiative that was born out of the Community Innovations Forum is Waterfront Wednesday. And we are going to do every third Wednesday of, of the summer, so starting this Wednesday through September. So every third Wednesday, we are going to have, just come out and enjoy our waterfront. So come over, buy the gazebo, bring a blanket, bring your lunch, and just enjoy the waterfront by having, by having lunch with us. And the idea is that a lot of people don't even realize that we have this wonderful waterfront, and they don't utilize it. And so we have a lot of people who don't live in our community but work in our community every day. And so we're hoping that this will bring them down, get to see the wonderful view of the new steps, the steps mural, and will bring some, some awareness to our waterfront. I am looking forward to representing Mount Clemens at the SEMCOG meeting on Thursday. It's open to everyone, if anyone would like to join me. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
I think I'm the only one that's not on social media, so I don't know what all these negative comments were.
You're lucky.
But I would like to say thank you to the street department. There were very many happy people that the street sweeper went down their street and cleaned it up in light of all the rain that we've had, all the seed pods that were blocking the gutters. So everybody's happy for that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to shout out and give thanks to the Weber Foundation and OU. They are sponsoring the fireworks and the band. And without their sponsorship, there'd be no fireworks or band. So please get the word out on social media positively and everywhere else you can to come on down and enjoy the fireworks and the great band. And with that, I need a motion to go into exec session.
So moved.
Support. Five-minute process.